And we call to order tonight's Wednesday, January 22nd, meeting of the Rockport Public Schools School Committee meeting. This meeting is being audio and video recorded. For the record, let's go around and introduce ourselves, starting with you, June.
June Sanfilippo, Business Manager.
Mark Lorenz, School Committee Member.
Nicole L. Terry, School Committee Vice Chair.
Kathy Riley, School Committee Chair.
Mark Branko, Superintendent.
Jessica DeLeese, School Committee Member.
Okay, great, thanks, thanks for being here. First order tonight, will, has everybody had a chance to review the minutes from, okay, from, let's see when it was, January 8th, okay. Can I, do I have a motion to approve the minutes for January 8th's meeting? Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Okay, this evening, do we have any public comment? Okay, would you come on up to the table? You have to speak really close to the microphones.
Make sure you turn that on with the green light. If you're both gonna talk, yeah, just go back and forth. Name, address, rank, file, the whole thing, and then you're on.
Did you say address?
Yeah.
Stacy Twombly, Co-President of the Rockport Teachers Association, 111 Main Street,
Joanne Hildreth, Co-President of the Rockport Teachers Association, I live in Beverly.
We appreciate and respect the work of Dr. Branko and the school committee to propose and soon vote on a detailed budget. We are grateful for this opportunity to present and voice teacher and staff perspectives through the lens of those working directly with students, as you consider the impacts that this proposed budget, budget will have.
This budget presents some opportunities that staff members appreciate. For example, the cost savings the new budget provides allows the district to fund the schools at least in the near term. It is also anticipated that there will be opportunities for deeper relationships and connections between staff and students at the middle and high school. The looping model in grades seven and eight, where the students will have the same four ELA, math, science, and social studies teachers for two years in a row, is one area for opportunity. Similarly, at least for current eighth grade students, two of their core teachers will move with them to the high school. Sixth grade teachers will also be teaching at the high school, which will allow them to reconnect with prior students. There is some excitement around the new middle school model, as well as the new opportunities presented at the high school, especially in the area of electives. With six 12 coordinators and looping teachers, the possibilities for streamlining content and instruction are present, thus making the learning process easier and more straightforward for students. Finally, the decisions made about the middle school model were made collaboratively between administration and core teachers. Last year, we spoke about teachers not being given a seat at the table regarding budgetary matters and its impact on the elementary school. This year, core teachers at the middle school appreciated having a seat at the table and being part of the process.
Creating a financially responsible budget is important, and we certainly understand the checks and balances that the district must endure to fund programming for its students. We feel strongly that with the cuts, it is also important to express, honor, and acknowledge the massive losses that have been made within a year, and now again for the proposed 25-26 school year. We would like to remind the committee and the townspeople of the hardships placed upon our teachers and students, which, despite sustaining, improving, or adding programs or ensuring the viability of our schools, has and will without question impact the classroom environment where students come to learn, build relationships, and achieve the necessary skills for their future. With the loss of seven additional RTA positions and last year's eliminated positions of similar size, the district has lost highly qualified teachers that have built connections with the students and have brought passion, energy, and unique perspectives to the grades and subject areas that they teach or have taught. Losing so many colleagues in a short period of time has been difficult for students and teachers alike. This warrants consideration, scrutiny, and pause as to its impact on learning in the classroom. While we do realize that the projected class sizes are within guidelines and reflect the class sizes in other districts, the positive relationships between students and teachers at RPS are a source of pride and impact student learning, as evidence-based research informs us. Educators in this tight-knit community are critical in explicitly guiding students' development, sharing knowledge across content areas, and helping them learn, grow, and excel toward meeting the rigorous standards set forth by our district and DESI. With bigger class sizes, we have concerns that it could affect the ability to build, develop, and deeply know our students, their learning needs, and deliver instruction with the required breadth and depth, both personally and academically. Teachers will have fewer opportunities in the hustle and bustle of the classroom to provide personalized learning to meet each student's strengths, needs, skills, and interests. Impacts include increased behavioral needs, decreased time to differentiate for all students, facilitating the management of more students, increased time spent on assessing students, and achieving inclusive practices will impact student learning. Simultaneously, students are grappling with more social pressures and outside distractions. Fewer teachers district-wide could potentially affect student achievement and well-being as teachers' roles are continually expanded to include more.
There's a concern over the loss of time on learning at the middle school due to the alignment of the middle and high school schedules. A byproduct of the new schedule is that each core class in grades seven and eight meets roughly 20 times less than they have in the past. Teachers in all three grade levels are making difficult decisions about what to cut from the curriculum. Students are experiencing classes with faster pacing, reduced content, or enrichment to make up for the loss of time. Additionally, we want to mention again that teachers, that the teachers that remain have been asked to do more and more and are provided with less and less. We are teaching new grades and new content by less and less, I mean like materials, paper, that kind of stuff, not support. We're definitely getting a lot of support. We are doing our best and will continue to do so, but we're overwhelmed. In any given year, students experience teachers that are new to the system, to a grade level or to a class. Next year, they will have numerous teachers across six 12 going through these changes. The final concern that we have as a general group is a big one, and that looms over many of us like a dark cloud. The district has spent the last few years reducing, reducing, reducing. We've cut teachers and paraprofessionals. Administration has seen the most growth, but thereto, there have been reductions. We know that next year, there may be some more changes to staffing. Reductions to supplies have already been made. We worry that in the very near future, there will be nothing left to cut. And then what?
Thank you. I'd like to continue for a few moments as a elementary curriculum coordinator, and I'm speaking on behalf of the four content area curriculum coordinators at Rockport Elementary School. The RES content area coordinators are not in favor of the consolidation of four curriculum coordinator liaison positions down to two. We believe combining the K to two and three to five mass science and ELA social studies positions will result in undesirable working conditions and less robust outcomes. First, the work will double, forcing one person to do the work of two people. Secondly, the integral collaboration collaborative process will be lost among the leading experts in the content areas. Another outcome of the reduction is a barrier in communication with colleagues in content areas. There will be too fewer people to lead grade-level curriculum initiatives and curriculum and professional learning community meetings, leading to grade levels being combined for active planning and organizing of content, which involves making choices about learning objectives, teaching methods, assessment strategies, and overall structure to ensure students achieve desired learning outcomes. We believe the essential ongoing work of designing and refining a curriculum to fit specific needs could become generic due to the lack of time for careful planning and personal knowledge in the content and the delivery of day-to-day instruction alongside our peers. We believe this model is unsustainable at the elementary level. We are also concerned that in the future, the positions will be entirely cut due to budget constraints, and fear the long-term impact this would have on maintaining learning outcomes for students.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other public comment? Okay, just wanted to be sure. Dr. Branko, do we have any correspondence at this time?
We do not.
Any donations at this time?
We do not.
Personnel?
No updates.
Okay. Do we have a student advisory committee representative?
So, we don't have a rep tonight, but I want to really make sure that the public knows that the Middle School Musical is opening up Thursday night. We have Mean Girls Junior, I believe, the middle school, putting it on Thursday night, Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. So, check the website. Sunday day, thank you. So, check the website for times. I know tickets are available at the door, and I have gone by rehearsal two or three times. It's gonna be hysterical and really well done. So, please, please, if you're looking for a good, good time and a good night out at the theater, come on out. And sports teams are cranking and have had some really good games this season already. And congratulations to our DECA program for having some kids move on to the state. And I'm gonna have him put together a little report for us, just so we can acknowledge those kids by name and publicly when all of the dust settles and we know how the results come in.
And I have a note that there's no subcommittee updates this evening.
There are no subcommittee updates. The policy subcommittee is on hold until after the, the week after the budget presentation. I believe the communication subcommittee has a meeting next week, but just so that people know that the work is being done like crazy. So, the postcards are literally in the mail this week, going out from the printer to start soliciting advertisements. We have a format, we have article, like kind of, kind of an article overview for formatting that's gonna go out. So, the administration got a look at that yesterday, and the full staff is gonna get an email from me tomorrow. I'm basically laying out the whole format of the newsletter, looking for people to help us out with editing and article writing and support, so that we can be a whole RPS community initiative, really take, take action and advocacy on behalf of our district, so that some of the fears and trepidations that we just heard about, you know, don't, don't actually come to fruition. So, I think there's gonna be a ton of work coming, so while, we'll keep giving an update, and then at the committee meeting next week, you guys will have some formal information in front of you. But, pretty exciting. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be nice when it rolls out.
Any idea when the first is forming?
The first week of March is what we're targeting, yeah. We, we talked to the committee about letting the budget come through on February 5th, letting the community breathe for three weeks or so, because that's a 50-page document, and then kind of time the first newsletter between that and town meeting. Yep. And then there'll be an end of year in June, just kind of culminating the school year.
So, we have a budget update?
We do. So, I'll go through the deck that's in your drive again, because we have new members sometimes and new people watching. I will at least skim through the slides from the first two budget sessions, and then I'll slow down when we come to the new information, so that the committee and the public understands where we are. So, we have our timeline, where we're looking for a public presentation and vote on the budget on February 5th at our next meeting. Then, the leadership team and I, in different formats, will be meeting with Board of Selectmen, FinCom, lots of community engagement between then and April 5th, and then the budget will be on the town meeting floor in totality, along with everything else, at Rockport Spring Town Meeting on April 5th. Just a reminder that, you know, as the RTA spoke about tonight, we're really here for kids. We're here to move education forward, and we need to remember that these are the, these are the young people that we're doing all the work for. So, I just want to continuously focus on that, and it's all of our community members' responsibilities to educate the next group of citizens that are coming through our town. We continue to follow the zero-based budgeting format, so we'll talk a little more in depth about that tonight, which is this, this process helped us make some different decisions tonight, and we'll talk about reductions in a unique way and a couple examples, as opposed to just rolling forward with the numbers we've used in the past. Again, we're addressing the operating budget tonight, capital improvement budget we had just met on prior to our last meeting, and June and I are awaiting information from CIPC. And then, once we have final information from CIPC, I'll come back to the school committee with an update to let you know what I think will be on the town meeting floor for that funding as well. We continue to work on our goal to develop fiscally responsible budget that does support growth and achievement of all students. That is a difficult ask, right? As we've heard tonight, as we'll continue to talk about publicly, it's very difficult in public financing, particularly with the, where the structure is set up with the state and the federal funding, to continue to be fiscally responsible and conservative and to still move your organization forward. If, if it was in a typical business model, you wouldn't necessarily hear people trying to save money and make the product better. So, that, it's a difficult, it's a difficult ask, but we're proud of the work we're doing. It's very difficult work, as we keep talking about, but we believe in the work, and we believe in our teachers, our educational staff, and, and most importantly, that the work is for the kids. You've already seen this, this sort of just speaks to the numbers and the realignment at the middle school, and as Ms. Hildreth talked about earlier, it was a really collaborative process to go through. Difficult for some people to sit there and have conversations about jobs that they might not be in, obviously, but really, really professional meeting, and, and the outcome was, was very, very helpful for all involved. And you can see the real numbers right in front of you, so you're dividing those numbers in, in half when you're talking about class sizes. So, on December 18th, this was the original preliminary overview that we presented to you, with an increase of almost 6% over last year's budget, and with a budget gap at the bottom, just over $1 million, and that was assuming a 2.9% contribution from, increase from the town's contribution. Then, we came back on January 8th, we had sharpened the pencils, we had done a little more math, we had taken a look at what we needed. That's part of the zero-based budgeting process. We had to look at what positions we did need, what positions we didn't, what line items we could kind of tweak and not tweak. And so, we came back to, talked about the original gap. The gap had wound up updated at just shy of 1.2 million, and you combine that original reduction with the secondary reductions of 874,000, which are on slides 11 through 13, and that allowed us at our last meeting to present a gap of only $60,000 left to close. Just a reminder of how we had closed that gap, because there are difficult decisions, and it is professional people's lives. So, there was a position reduction after town meeting vote last year, middle school assistant principal, after town meeting last year of a middle school special ed teacher, and after town meeting last year of elementary paraprofessionals. And in order to honor the concept of zero-based budgeting, those positions were not rolled forward. More traditional budgeting, sometimes you would roll them because they were baked into the budget, and then you cut, and it's just not as transparent to it that way. So, these were not baked into the budget. And as we just heard here earlier and at the previous two meetings, it is a reduction of 7.0 FTEs of, of teachers, mostly allowing the reconfiguration for the middle school. One is retirement, and six are actually reduction in force of, of current employees. As you also heard about earlier and discussed at the other meetings, we're looking at a realignment of our curriculum coordinators. There's a financial savings there equals basically the equivalent of a paris salary. We do not believe it's thoughtful of us to make another reduction of another human being at this point in time, and as you will see, we're pretty tight with the final cuts on the last two slides of this presentation. So, the only other way to close that $35,000 to $40,000 gap really becomes, becomes personnel. It's, it's the most costly part of any budget, and we've already made a lot of deep personnel cuts and are not comfortable presenting anymore at this time. So, the reduction of five paraprofessionals, some of which is tied to a reorganization of programming that you're gonna hear about and had heard about at the last one, and the last one is reduction of one full-time administrator, which will put us in a position to have one pre-K to 12 special education facilitator instead of one at the elementary level and one at the middle high school level. Also, on January 8th, we presented this list of reductions to the tune of $265,281, and I just want to make sure we're all using the same language when we talk about reductions in supplies, materials, and whatever else is on this list. If you look at the language, there are decreases in the proposed number, not decreases from this current budget. So, what that means is we did zero-based budgeting, recognized what we needed, those numbers went up. We are cutting from the increased number, but none of the supplies, materials, lines, et cetera are actually lower.
They're actually more.
They're actually more, they're all more. So, I just want to make sure everybody understands what they're really, what's being proposed and what they're seeing here. So, these are proposed reductions to the proposed, to the original proposed number from December, which was done at a zero-based budget, gotta have it model, and to be fair, we can't have a 6% increase, so we have to go the other way. But in all cases, the numbers are actually increased from the current budget, which again is, is sometimes hard to believe, but that's, we're, it's pretty good shape. We actually met with, both principals, June and I met with Amy, the two Amys separately this past week, took a look at every single line item. Content leaders and teachers had put together a must-have, nice-to-have, ought-to-have spreadsheets by department and by grade level, and we believe we're actually gonna be able to fund every single of the ought-to-haves in the first column, and in some cases, we'll be able to move over to the secondary column. So, the supplies, materials, and instructional support budgets are, are sound in this particular budget, despite the fact that we were able to find the 265 and make the reduction. So, that left us at our last meeting, January 8th, with a gap of about $60,000, a little over that. This is the first time anybody has seen this publicly, so this is the new updated overall, and we believe to be the final budget overview. So, what you see here now is a little bit more of tightening of the belt. Total gap on the right of just over, just around 1.2 million. Reductions to date, close the gaps, we're outlined. We make an original, an additional reduction, sorry, of $23,000 and change that you'll see on slide 17 that we'll go through, which leaves us with a, a gap of just under $37,000, and we're gonna recommend that we fund that small gap through the reserves. Please, if you look at the spreadsheet and you see the percentage decrease, it is a decrease of .05% from last year's budget. Not only is that level funded, it's below level funded, and we're still increasing lines, and we're still maintaining $2 million in the reserves. Really, really important to, to understand that. Important for the taxpayers, important for FinCom, important for the Select Board to understand that it is a 0% increase. It is fully level funded, and as a matter of fact, it's a tick underneath it. That's predicated on a 2.9% ask from the community. The reason for the 2.9 instead of 2.7 from last year is because the offsets are down a little bit. When you look at state, federal funding, you look at the grants, music fees, transportation, and some of these other offsets that come in to supplement the budget outside of the taxpayer appropriation, those offsets are down, and as a result of those being down, we're asking the taxpayers for 2.9. The difference between 2.7 and 2.9 is less than $40,000, which is one position, and we're just politely asking that the 2.9 be supported, so that we're not in a position to have to turn around and make another difficult staffing decision. So, here on slide 17, this is how we get that 23601, taken care of. Decrease the professional development substitute budget from our proposed 25 to 0. We have been covering PD substitute coverage through the overall substitute budget and don't feel like, we feel like we need to be more, more transparent, but just more truth in lending, right? So that, so that our budget actually reflects how we do business, so that's not a line that we used to use. We had line item autonomy and put that money elsewhere, usually probably just over to the PD line in general or somewhere else. So, right now, we feel like we're gonna be okay with that. We also have different ways of covering teachers if they're on a professional development. We have building-based subs that we can use, and so we'll, we'll have to get a little creative, but we don't think that that's gonna hurt us, nor is it gonna get in the way of us sending professional staff out for PD at all. Big, big proponent of making sure we can continue to do that. Propose to decrease the special ed substitute budget from $10,000 to $7,500. Similarly, we're gonna look at how we're using our substitute budget creatively, and we just think we're, based on historical trends, we're not in a position where all of that money will be spent, and it's, and it's worth making that cut now. Decrease Medicaid filing budget from $2,500 to $2,000. I will let June talk a little bit about Medicaid, 'cause it's not my, my wheelhouse.
We, the school department fills out the Medicaid forms, and then the town receives the money. With the new model, it is, we're receiving less funds statewide, and therefore, it's usually based on what you're receiving, so therefore, the cost that we pay for the third party to process those fees and those reimbursements has gone down. So, we're very comfortable reducing that to $2,000, as of last year, we were, we were below it. So, we're com, very comfortable doing that.
The next one decreases the out.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yeah.
How much is the Medicaid reimbursement in general, June, do you think?
Well, it can be all over. It depends on different services that are provided. It's a very complex formula that our special ed students services office has to do.
And I feel like I've asked it.
Two years ago, we received 50-plus thousand. Last year, well, fiscal '24, we received, according to the information I received from town hall, 'cause it isn't in our budget, so I don't visually see it, it was around So, that's why you see a difference in the fees that we have to pay for processing.
And am I correct that that money goes right back to the town? It does not cover the school?
It does go right back to the town. That isn't a Rockport decision, that is any city or town, Medicaid money goes into town
So, the next one is a decrease in our outside evaluation budget from $330,000 down to $320,000. We don't think that $10,000 is gonna impact our ability to get through the outside evaluation process, based on the students that we know we're servicing now and the projections that we have in front of us. And then, June really took a close, close look at contractual column movements and was able to just sort of sharpen the pencil a little bit. It's not, you know, it's not an outrageously high amount of money that we're cutting there, but we think that's pretty reflective of, of who will actually complete column movements and earn those movements, and, you know, even though it's just under $8,000, every $8,000 matters in this budget, so we're gonna, we believe that that's a true number. We did a recalculation of the rest of salary budget. Now that we actually have names, right, it's easier to do. We were kind of using placeholder numbers for the first two rounds of budgeting, but now that we actually have names of positions, and we know exactly who's here, who's not here, what that, where they're gonna fall in, in the new contract, this is more of a true number. That gives us a total new reduction of 23,601, and then we're suggesting that we take that final 36938 from the reserves. As you heard, the reserves are 2.02 million right now. When I stood on the town meeting floor a year ago, they were 2 million. I know June will ask me to be cautious with my language choices, so I will do that before she tells me publicly to do so, and similar to my family's checking account, it looks like this on any given day. So, at the, at the important moments in time, when we pass a budget at the town meeting floor, the number holds, but if you looked at that line, the number goes up and down. It ebbs and flows based on the needs of the district, the needs of our students. The good news is it continues to stay. So, to, to the point that was made earlier by the reps from, from RTA, yeah, we've talked publicly about you can only make so many cuts before you have no place left to look, and that's why we need to keep the reserve healthy, because if the reserve is healthy, that gives us a little bit of a tight, tight rope and a net to, to deal with. So, I think we're, we're right now cautiously optimistic about that number, and we'll continue to give you updates in real time a couple times a year, and then when we hit the town meeting floor, we'll kind of refine that number to make sure it's a true number, so that when we have to talk about it, we will. So, that's where we are. This last slide shows you the total reductions, total FTE equivalents. Then, it shows you the reductions to close the gap that we talked about, which is 13 FTE equivalents with just under 1.2 million, and then the remaining number covered by reserves. Again, important to talk about the fact that this represents a .05% reduction in total growth over FY '25, and it does support programmatic additions and improvements. I want to echo, I think, what my colleague said when they started the meeting during public comment. We're talking about people's lives, we're talking about people who have committed a big chunk of their professional time to this community. It's not lost on the leadership team that class size does matter, it's not lost on the leadership team that every time we don't spend enough money on supplies and materials and professional development, that that does matter, and it is our absolute desire to continue to move forward and to, to build a budget that supports teaching and learning, supports all of our professional abilities to meet the needs of our kids. And right now, as difficult as this budget is to build and present, this budget does So, in the spirit of trying to be glass half-full during a presentation discussing cuts, every year, we do present the programmatic and staffing priorities in the budget book, and I wanted to give the school committee and the public a highlight of that before you actually see the book in its totality. So, we are happy to take a look at developing what we're calling the Intensive Learning Program. Anne Marie did kind of give you a commercial and a preview of that at one of our previous meetings, and we've talked about it a little bit on camera a couple times. It will provide specific students with educational programming and learning environment here in their hometown, in their school district, that's uniquely designed to meet their needs. They will benefit from attending schools with their local peers in an inclusive setting. This feels like we're mirroring the conversation we had two weeks ago, when we talked about the benefits of coming to preschool in a public school versus preschool in a, in a private preschool. We get the facilities, the gymnasiums, the art rooms, a breadth of professional staff and support that doesn't really come when they go out to other specialized locations. So, we are proud of this. We would not put ourselves or our students or our families in a We would not put ourselves, or our students, or our families in a position to build this if we didn't think it could be done, and we're confident right now that this can be done, and this will serve a specific population of kids. We've talked a lot about the directive curriculum position in the past budget, and now the need for the curriculum review cycle. I believe that number's been close to doubled in the budget. It's a, it's a healthy number, we'd like it to be a little higher. But, Ms. Goody does a lot of work with Anne Marie and with Jody when it comes to looking at grant funding and supplementing the curriculum review and adoption cycle. But we're finally in a position as a district where we're gonna be able to have teachers work with leaders on really adopting new programming and new resources, and build a budget that's sustainable, so that we can continue to, to evolve and not have the same resources, materials become outdated or unusable. Talked about this earlier, have to, have to, have to continue to invest in all of our staff members, so that the professional development budget needs to stay healthy, needs to be there to be able to support teaching and learning, instructional practices, and curricular designs. Happy that we're gonna continue with our partnership with Project Lead the Way, and continue to push on our computer science and engineering programs at the middle school and the high school. Important to remember, and you'll see this in the grant funding slides as well, when the budget book comes out, that Project Lead the Way has a department that is on top of what grants school districts can and can't apply for. They work with the Director of Teaching and Learning and the department to figure out which ones are most viable for Rockport. That's their business model. So we're not really nervous about that source drying up. We also have a great partnership with our technology department in town of Rockport, and what I would consider a, a close to healthy curriculum review cycle budget. I'd like it to be larger, but right now, it's right where, where we need, we need it to be. So programs like this need to be sustainable, I think that was something I said in my first year. I don't wanna put new things in place, and then pull the rug out from under adults or kids. So that, the hope here is that everything we're presenting remains sustainable. We've talked a lot about our work around developing and implementing multi-tiered systems of support. If you look at, at the strategy for district improvement, you'll see the elementary instructional coach from last year's budget, you'll see the development of wind blocks, you'll see that we're trying to implement a data analytics platform to give us as much information and data as possible to impact teaching and learning and the development of curricular materials. So that work continues to evolve. We're not 100% where we need to be, but really proud of the work we've been doing, doing so far. We will continue to push on it in the subsequent years. And then the addition of the maintenance position that we talked about at the last meeting, just aging buildings. We need more timely responses, and we need to make sure particularly the stuff that has to be adjusted for children and for teachers gets done a, a little quicker than, than it has been in the past. We think this is gonna be an important position. So I'll take a pause. That's where we are. I think it's just an important preview, I'd love to have any questions tonight. And then, as I told Chairwoman Riley before the meeting, our plan is to have a PDF draft of the entire 50-page budget book to you all by midday Monday, so that you have a week and a half, two weeks, to really, really look at it, to talk amongst yourselves, figure it out, ask any questions of me, and then really be prepared to do a, a public dissemination of the entire book on February 5th.
Just a comment, I guess, that, you know, I've heard from teachers over the course of the last few weeks as we've been discussing the budget, and, you know, hearing from the statement today from the union about different concerns, and it, you know, seems that a lot of those concerns are being addressed in the staffing priorities, is what I feel like. So, the, you know, more professional development, or a focus on professional development, I think can hopefully address some of the issues with the timing, and maybe some new positions, or worried about extra workload, so I'm hoping professional development can, can help with that. The MTSS and the wind block model, I think that might help with some of the behaviors and student learning. So it, it really seems like a lot of concerns are being addressed to me. So I'm, I'm glad to see that that information is, is highlighted here, and I'm looking forward to seeing that in the budget book, and, and seeing more, more about it.
Yeah, and I, I think it's fair to say and not minimize the reality that there are, there are going to be a good amount of teachers, teaching new courses, new grade levels, making shifts. So you're right, the budget, the budget does support it, right? We need social emotional support for adults just as much as we need for kids. Is that a fair, fair way to put it? And it starts with the superintendent office all the way down, I think, some days. So, it is gonna be important that we continue to take care of each other and recognize that, yes, there's a lot being asked of the professionals who are going to be here, moving, helping us move this district forward. And so I, I wanna make sure we continue to acknowledge that the budget does, in my opinion, support the work. It doesn't make the work any easier, it just supports it.
Yeah, I mean, I think I wanted to just make sure that we say that the school committee takes it very seriously that each of these positions is a real person. Even though we always say we're cutting positions and not people, we're looking at the positions, but we're, we do take it very seriously, we do understand the, the difficulties, and we recognize that the people that are in our schools, from the administrators, the staff, the educators, are the most important thing for our kids. And so while we, we definitely appreciate all the work that Mark and the admin team has done, creating this budget that is making these cuts, but can still move the district forward, I think we do wanna recognize that we, we do take it very seriously, the cuts are being made. And we really appreciate the collaborative way that the middle school team was able to come and have those discussions, and really put kids first, knowing that they were maybe making decisions where some people wouldn't be here anymore. So we really appreciate that, and we know it must've been difficult, and it was very professional and in the best interest of kids, so.
When I was, um, before I was involved in schools, either as a very involved parent or school committee, I had no idea what a big part budget played in schools. I mean, obvi- it's obvious, but I was blissfully unaware. And being on the school committee, working with the leadership team and Dr. Branco, all I have to say is, it's really fun when the teachers and the students come in and tell us about the great stuff that they're learning. This is not the fun part, but it's the reality part. We do take it very seriously. I would like to say that I look forward to more public comment and more input from teachers, parents, staff, as next year progresses, as this year progresses. Hearing about feeling, it looks like 20 classes behind in some, in some core classes, like that's a key issue to start addressing, or to look for ways to address. Something that we wouldn't know about if you weren't speaking here tonight. So, public comment is, is really important, emails, however you choose to communicate how things are going. I appreciate also hearing about the positives that you hope will come from this, and some of the positives that did happen from this year's changes too. We do take it very seriously, I hope you know that. And, and again, it's a, it's a huge effort, and I appreciate the huge effort from everybody who is trying to move the district forward while also creating a budget that leaves us with, leaves us stable as well. So, thank you very much.
So we're all set on timeline, we'll shoot for Monday with the book, and we'll be back here for a public hearing on February 5th. So your next agenda item is to vote on the review and approval of the academic calendar for next year. I know it seems crazy this early in the year, but people are already looking at field trips and looking at concert dates, and we get, educators get very territorial around the, the calendar and when, when their dates hit. So, hopefully you've had time to take a look at it. It's been reviewed about a million times with calculators and 12,000 eyeballs, so the hope is that we didn't miss anything, and won't have to come back for a, for an update. But right now, we believe this is, this is the calendar we'd like to come forward with. So you see that our December break is a nice, healthy break, based on when the holiday falls. And again, we have the half-days before the, the long weekend holidays.
I didn't have any questions about this, but I just realized today how early graduation is this year. That's super.
Yep.
That's super.
Right, either way, graduation doesn't move.
Yeah, yeah. End of school doesn't, yeah, exactly. I didn't have any questions about this, anyone else?
So we just need a motion, yep, yep.
So, to have a motion to approve the 25-26 school calendar as presented this evening.
So moved.
Second? All, I always have trouble with this word. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, great.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other discussion at this time? Oh, finance, there's none at this time.
I think finance was covered in the budget.
Yeah, yeah, that was enough of that, so to speak. Okay, great, well, we do have a need for executive session to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. We adjourn from executive session, will not reconvene in an open session. This requires a roll call vote. Riley, yes?
Lorenz, yes?
Eltira, yes?
Delisi, yes? Great, thank you very much, thank, thank you for coming.